All right. All right, we will call the meeting to order. Let's see. One second. Before we do that, let's see. Mr. City Attorney, do we have any report from closed session?
You'll need to state it again, I just unmuted the phone.
Oh, okay. Shannon, do we have anything to report from closed session? Apparently not. Have we confirmed that he's here yet? Or she's doing that right now? While we're doing that, I'm going to move forward with the regular meeting. We've already called the order. Virtual information, the governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor has also issued an executive order N 3320, which directs Californians to follow the public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are top priority to the city of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health-safety precautions. This meeting is utilizing the GoToWebinar application for this live broadcast. The meeting, for this meeting, we will be using the questions functionality of the tool in order to accommodate public comment. On the desktop computers, the questions section of the app is located at the bottom of the GoToWebinar panel that is on the right side of the screen. On mobile devices, there is a question mark at the bottom toolbar that opens the questions screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the questions portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear, excuse me, for that specific item. Please be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Espendola.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right, if everyone will decide, please stand for words of inspiration by Mr. Councilmember Shaw, followed by pledge allegiance to the flag by Manny Cardoza.
Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Father, we just thank you for the awesome responsibility that you have placed upon our shoulders as we work to serve this city. Father, I just pray right now that you will just give us wisdom, you'll give us safety, and you'll give us guidance as we do what's best for our residents of the city of Yuba City in making decisions going forward. And Father, I just ask right now that as we recognize Mr. Poe tonight, as he goes into retirement, that you would just pour out your blessings upon him and let him have a wonderful retirement, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, are you there?
Yes, I am.
All right, do we have anything to report from closed session?
No report of action was taken in closed session, Mr. Mayor, and there was no public comment.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have any agenda modifications? Good? All right. And let's move on to item number one, the good stuff. Mr. Daniel Poe Retirement Proclamation. Is he? Oh, right in front of me. Behind the mask. Well, sir, I wish I could shake your hand, but you know, here you are. Historical moment going down in history of this COVID thing, right? But we are welcome, Mr. Dan Poe, wastewater treatment plan, excuse me, wastewater treatment chief plant operator. On May 29th, 2020, Dan Poe retired from the city of Yuba City with over 13 years of service. Dan's knowledge and advanced wastewater treatment made him a vital resource during the recent MPDES permit renewal process in 2019. Dan was an integral part in leading staff in making several major process control changes that improved secondary clarifier performance, increasing solids capture rates and thus reducing chlorine costs and saving $100,000 annually. Thank you for that. Dan has been instrumental in the wastewater system technological improvements by committing countless hours assisting in the design, construction, and startup of the Yuba City wastewater treatment facility. It's a big deal. Now, therefore be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby commend Dan's outstanding and loyal service and sincerely urge all residents of the city of Yuba City to join with me and the council in recognizing Mr. Daniel Paul Poe for all of his contributions to the Yuba City community for the past 13 years. His dedicated interest and devotion to his duties in protecting the environment has earned Dan the respect and admiration of all residents and coworkers alike. So congratulations, heartfelt congratulations from all of us for your hard work in your retirement. We do have some flowers here for you to bring back for your wife. It's unfortunate she wasn't able to make it today, but that's a gift for her dedication as well, because she no doubt has some. Would you care to say anything, sir?
It's been an honor to work with everybody, and I miss my friends, and it's the greatest job I ever had, and I love and miss everybody.
Congratulations. It's amazing how fast 13 years goes by. Oh, man. All right. Item number two, discussion and action on measures to mitigate the impacts of the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm going to, I had a presentation prepared for tonight. I'm going to go through a couple of the slides, and then I just want to thank Robert Bindorf, CIO of Yuba County, and Steve Smith, CIO of Sutter County, for offering to come to the meeting tonight to be able to answer questions and provide some information to council. So I'm going to go through a couple of slides, ask them to come up, and then we'll complete the presentation. The latter part of the presentation will be more related to city operations. So with that... So as you all know, the state is currently monitoring counties based on the following: so elevated disease transmission, increasing hospitalizations, and limited hospital capacity. So as of July 6th, Sutter County has a total of 275 cases, 209 were symptomatic, 66 were asymptomatic, with a total of 13 individuals hospitalized, and then three deceased to this point. And this slide shows the source of infection. As you can see, a large portion of that is contact with known cases. If you look at the age ranges down here, again, 25 to 34 age range has the highest amount, and then it's like a bell curve where it goes down from there, although you do have a blip at the 55 to 64 range. And then the split between male and female, slightly more on the female side than the male side. And I think this next slide's important, because when you look at the cases by location of residence, and so this is for Yuba County and Sutter County combined, you can see that the overwhelming majority of cases are within Yuba City, so 224 cases. So at this point in time, I'll go over one more thing. On July 1st, Governor Newsom issued a new order that all counties on the state watch list for more than three days shall close the following for three weeks. So indoor dining restaurants, indoor wineries and tasting rooms, indoor family entertainment centers, indoor movie theaters, indoor zoos and museums, indoor card rooms, and then brew pubs, breweries, bars, and pubs, both indoor and outdoor operations. So at this point in time, I'd like to invite Mr. Bindorf and Mr. Smith, whoever would like to speak first, to come up and be able to provide an update to council.
Oh, I'll leave, unless you, would you prefer I take this off? Is it... Okay, well, good evening, and thank you for allowing me some time to speak. Honorable Mayor and council members, Steve Smith, Sutter County. So, yeah, a part of what I think would be good to cover is this updated order from the governor. And initially, there were 19 counties on this monitoring list, and as Diana mentioned, there were restrictions put on dine-in restaurants, wineries, et cetera, and I think that's probably the main impact that it would have to our community. I'm sure there would be some others with the family entertainment centers and theaters as well, but... So one thing we're trying to do is hoping that we can mitigate this somewhat, but you have seen the drastic rise in cases, particularly over the weekend, and then yesterday there were 34 new cases and six hospitalizations in one day. I was just told that there was a Sutter County death today, so an additional death, unfortunately. I don't think any additional hospitalizations, but I'm not certain on that, so... One thing we've been told is, so the board of supervisors is very concerned about businesses, as I'm sure your council is, and we've been in frequent communication with the Downtown Business Association, with the Chamber of Commerce, and the EDC. And today Chair Solinger sent a letter on behalf of the board to the governor to advocate that local data be used in these decisions and not just a blanket kind of statement or blanket policy be used by the state. We have, you know, most recently, the governor allowed local data to be used in the reopening phases, and we thought it worth advocating for our local businesses that the same standard be used in these consideration of closing these businesses, because we know it has a massive impact on the community, and I can't, I can only imagine how rough it is to be laid off for a couple months to just get back to work and then maybe have to do it again for the individual workers, and just as bad for the business owners that were trying to make ends meet. So the supervisors would, will be considering next week, as part of our, the Sutter County's CARES Act funding, some initial grants for these impacted businesses if this comes to fruition, which it looks like it will over the next several days or into the weekend. I've had a few folks ask, well, why don't we just not comply? You know, why don't we, so just tell the state tough? Which is a valid question, I guess, especially if it weren't for the great increase in cases that we have seen. But even if that weren't the case, there's a couple reasons. One, the governor has tied CARES Act money to compliance, and not only is it the little over $10 million that Sutter County would be looking at getting, but also realignment backfill, which would be equivalent to about $5 million. So, and about a third of that total, most likely, and it'll ultimately be up to the board, but will be going to local businesses, straight into the community. It's not just for, you know, counties, labor, or things responding to the emergency. On top of that, the governor has created a task force comprised of agents from ABC, alcoholic beverage control, and I'm told OSHA, CalOSHA, and also possibly the cosmetology board. So even if local authorities said, you know, there's, we're not going to comply with the governor, there would be enforcement, much like we saw before, at least allegedly, I can say. So to have that enforcement and also not receive that money, that funding, sorry, that money that we can pass on to businesses to at least try to help during this time, I think would be really unfortunate. So the letter sent to the state did say we are complying and with federal and state and local orders, and that, but we would appreciate consideration of local numbers and local data. One other thing I wanted to mention and thank Councilmember Espendola is the Latino outreach that was recently done, and I don't want to steal your thunder, and you probably, probably want to comment about it towards the end when you each speak, so I won't go too far into that, but just thank you very much for your leadership on that with Supervisor Flores and a few other folks, and we're still working on that. And then just outreach with the SCORE, Sutter County's, it's a Sutter COVID outreach resiliency effort. It's similar to the YES team, which Robert has running in Yuba County to reach out to businesses. So that's really all I have for now, and Robert probably has much more, so if Robert would like to speak, and then we can answer questions and/or I can answer some questions now, you know, whatever you prefer.
Steve, I'm just curious to know, is the SCORE team on this side of the river versus the Yuba County's YES team? Have you experienced your success, what successes have you had, or what challenges have you had? Do you still have goals as far as processes that you're still trying to work through or anything? We can, just for information only, we'd like to receive that, but any way we can maybe help out?
Sure. I am scheduling a call for this week with the leads of the SCORE team, so I'll have more information soon that I can forward over. They do maintain a spreadsheet of businesses, which is getting pretty massive now that they've visited, and then provide information. Today I had a local restaurant owner call me. I forwarded the concerns to the SCORE team and copied the restaurant owner, and the team immediately responded and sent some CDC guidance and some state guidance, and then followed up with a phone call to the restaurant owner and said, if you have any questions, just call me directly. This was John Flo, our lead on the SCORE team. So also, we are looking at focusing on the Latino outreach as well. We have put, we have people that speak various languages on the SCORE team, and we've also put an eligibility worker on the team for outreach, so that, from our understanding, we've had some issues with maybe a lack of trust from those who maybe don't normally interact with the government, or they're concerned that if they don't go to work, they're not going to have any money, they're not, they're going to lose their job, that kind of thing. So we also have outreach for, to at least be able to let them know what benefits are available to them. So we've, we've got a, I guess, a wide-ranging approach, but we can always do better, and we're always open for ideas, and I just spoke with Councilmember Espendola, geez, texting over the weekend and also speaking, I think Friday we spoke, Thursday or yesterday, too? Oh, okay, it was yesterday. Time flies. I don't know.
I know they'd appreciate, I don't know if you, they put together maybe an FAQ document of sorts for business owners. I know that some folks would appreciate, just flat out, if we have an exposure at work, one of my 10 employees have an exposure, what do I do now? And where do I go? What is my, well, legal and of course ethical obligations there? I think if we can, if there's a way to have a one-stop shopping place for those folks to go for information, that would really help, and it's very likely already in your plan, but that's been expressed to me recently, and I just wanted to communicate that.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, because that's what the call was about today.
Oh, great, okay.
They didn't have an outbreak, but they said, what if I get an employee?
Right.
Exactly should I do?
Put somebody in a tough spot if they had that and not really know what to do.
Right, so we provided that, but I think, you know, we can post that online and provide links.
Excellent, excellent, thank you.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, just curious what we're doing going forward to help address this from the county level. I know that you guys did the outreach, I heard about it over the weekend, and kudos, that's awesome. I know that our local business owners here have gone above and beyond in most every case. I mean, there's always the rogue ones that are out there, but the local business owners here have. I've even watched our big box stores, you know, national retailers start to come into line as well with trying to enforce the face covers and ask at least and not just ignore it. But when we get back to this, as the previous slide stated, it's contact tracing, tracing as far as close contact, which is all these family gatherings, and I know it has hit different demographics of our society harder, and you guys were reaching out to one of those demographics this weekend. But what are we doing on an ongoing basis to help educate people, to help them stop some of the social gatherings that's going on and the large masses that is causing this uptick? Because I like Dr. Lou, but after about three months of anything, you, you know, people naturally start tuning out. And she had a very passionate message the other day, it just said straight up, you know, wake up and get with the program. But after three months, I'm not sure that those updates are probably our best avenue. What else are we going to try to do? Because we need to, we need to bend this curve, because we don't, we do not need ride-out hospital full and the ICU full. Any ideas at this point?
I have tried banging my head against a wall, and that was ineffective. However...
That's what happens when you...
Yeah. Uh-oh.
It was supposed to be pots and pans at 7:00, remember?
But you're right, it's very difficult, and also what I have found is, as we are communicating to the public about this, there's, you know, a portion of the population that is very against this, whether they, mask-wearing, or the distancing, or they feel it's against the Constitution, or that kind of thing. So it has been rough. Some of the things we've done is utilize, you know, contacts of people that we feel like, oh, you have a good relationship with XYZ organization or this group, maybe you could go and talk to them and encourage them. I've sent a personal letter the other day to a large organization that had received some complaints and had been advertising that they were having a large event and that would have, and I know they held it, but that violated the order, and I sent a letter with my concerns. Additionally, I think, yeah, beyond Dr. Lou providing outreach, and I understand, you know, some, a portion of the population aren't going to listen no matter what, some are almost maybe always going to listen, and others may be skeptical or somewhere in between. We have developed, with the sheriff and the board, we were going to have a few events where need a mask, just ask and provide masks, maybe have a drive-through type thing where supervisors and the sheriff can, and staff can hand out masks and different PPE and things. Be glad to have the city on board and participate in that. So there are a variety of things, but we don't have, we haven't lucked into that one effective strategy that is going to convince people. I mean, I, our PIO posted the other day that, on Facebook, that not only are masks the law, they work, and then he had an article posted, and almost every comment was about how it's not the law, and it kind of was a message that was lost. And I understand, you know, there's some nuance there where, okay, it's an order, but it's enforceable by Health and Safety Code, which is law. But we don't want to get into that argument, it was a, you know, I'm just saying, things turn into something that you don't want them to be when you're just trying to advocate for people's safety. And we also, though, understand the frustration of individuals who are tired of wearing masks, or I'm tired of wearing this mask. And it's easy to get complacent, so just continually reinforcing that message, and you know, we are always open to ideas, and Councilmember Espendola had some ideas with the SCORE team that we already implemented, so we're open, because we know we're not, we're not perfect, and we've got a tall task ahead of us.
Okay. Well, thank you for everything, and I just want to say, Mr. Smith, Mr. Bindorf, thank you guys, because you guys have been not running a sprint, but a marathon since the beginning of this, so thank you for everything you guys have done. And I know it was a loaded question, I just didn't know if you had any other ideas. If you do reach the point of wanting to do a mask giveaway, we had great success at my office. A few months ago, we gave out 3,000 in about three hours. So if the, if that becomes an option, then, that you guys want to pursue, it was a good location, natural queue up for traffic, I'll be happy to, just give me a call and we'll see what we can do.
Thank you very much, yeah. I know our ag department just got 7,000 N95 masks, which aren't for the average person, but you know, are good for the farmers, and I know also, they've given out to this point to, specifically to the ag community, a little over 100,000 masks over the past, you know, month or so, but yeah, we appreciate your efforts, too, thank you.
No problem. The offer's there, if you need a location, just give me a call.
Thanks.
Through Vice Mayor? Because the chair, the mayor's gone, so I'm going through you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I just would like to thank you, Steve Smith, and I would like to thank the, your team, in particular Rudy Rodriguez, as I mentioned to you, for his dedication and working, and I look forward to hearing also what Robert is going to be presenting. I think the outreach to Latinos and non-English-speaking community members is really important, and I applaud the work that, the focus on that. But I also have, you know, we've talked about the need to improve the consistency of reaching out to businesses and helping them have a better understanding of how to, what are the rules for them, and how to manage it, and how to process. I think that would be so helpful to many of our businesses, because I think that they're more than likely willing to comply, and so I am interested in seeing the collaboration, the coordination by county, because we are a by-county. People in Marysville often say, or in Yuba County, well, I live in Yuba City. No, you live in Yuba County, that's another county, but they all consider this one area. And so I like the collaboration between you and Robert, and also the supervisors and Marysville, and I think that this is the way we're going to be able to reduce the spread of this, and I want to thank you so much for listening and willing to always work with us. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Steve, I'm going to keep mine short, number one, again, as has been said, thanks for your effort, and I'll thank Robert when he hops up there, too, but I do know this is, this isn't non, this is not traditional work for county administrator and the army of folks you have working in the background. Very encouraged to hear about the county support for the use of local data. If you feel like there's any benefit in having us pen a letter to support that, let us know. Certainly, I think, you know, I think it makes sense to have local decisions based upon local data, rather than just a broad brush painted over the top. I do, I do want to echo one thing, and this comes from my experience of operating a business with the unfortunate circumstance of having a COVID-19 infected employee, is that, you know, there's a challenge out there in getting real-time data, and I, you know, by virtue of the fact that I've listened to, you know, the doc and how overwhelmed they are, and I'm certainly understanding of that, but as the case load continues to increase, I think that's only going to be another area that is going to be... to increase, I think that's only going to be another area that is going to be very important to reach out to businesses, because it gets to be quite frustrating when you're trying to figure out what to do, what not to do. I have the benefit of listening to you guys almost on a weekly basis, but there's a lot of businesses that don't have that. And I think to Councilwoman Escondola's point is, is there's a piece there that I think we, we, we can challenge ourselves to be a little bit better at. And if there's something we can do to help you with that as a city, certainly want to commit that as well. But again, thanks. I know this isn't, this isn't easy stuff, and, and I appreciate the fact that you guys are definitely engaged in trying to make decisions in the best, the best way.
Thank you very much. And I, I know Robert can cover some of the efforts that we're reinstituting at the moment as well, that will assist.
Thank you very much, Steve, appreciate it.
So either you get the mask or the glasses, so. Since my face is not that pretty, I'm just going to give you the mask, how's that? Because the glasses just don't work very well with this thing on. So Robert Bendor, County Administrator for Yuba County, and thanks so much for having us here. I know it was on short notice, but as Steve and I were talking about, things in the ever-changing environment of COVID-19, felt that, hey, why not go over to Yuba City's meeting tonight and talk with them? And I'll ask Steve to join me over at the city of Marysville as well too, soon. But obviously, we're facing just a huge challenge, even bigger than before. You've seen the numbers, I won't belabor the point there. But I can tell you that it doesn't take much for us to continue moving forward. A lot of dedicated staff, but a lot of tired staff too. And, but we're making those adjustments as we go along. You know, the, I was giving my board a briefing this morning, and one of them asked if I had some free time this afternoon. And I said, no, I don't. Then I, this evening I do, but it's just one COVID-19-related meeting after the other. And as Steve can agree as well, it's a real challenge. So I can tell you some things that are going on right now, and some ways of, of doing business a little bit differently. We are going to activate the call center. Again, you know, we shut it down for a while there, but considering the current circumstances, we are going to fire it back up. So we are marshaling resources, we've appointed two dedicated, full-time, on-call, or call-center managers. And then we're also gathering resources to man that call center as well. And those resources are coming from not only Yuba County employees, but Sutter County employees. And we're looking at, at staffing that to a five-day-a-week operation, most likely beginning Thursday or Friday. There is some rewiring that we have to do. We just went through a wholesale change where we're using our joint information, or where our Joint Information Center was located. So they'll be in our EOC, where we have the, the facilities necessary to conduct that. That's one slight change, we're pulling our PIOs from running the Joint Information Center to having those two dedicated managers. The PIOs will be really involved, but their attention needs to be focused elsewhere. And we're very confident that they'll still be involved, they're housed in the same area, so we'll be fine in that regard. In addition to that, we are, I believe Vice Mayor Boomgarden mentioned about the, the, or somebody did, about the, the daily operations center and the doc, basically. You know, we have about 20 dedicated staff there now, a combination of Yuba and Sutter County employees. We are doubling that staff. So we've already identified on both sides of the river, an additional 20. And the recruitments began earlier this week for a separate classification for contact tracers and contact investigators. There is a difference, but I'm not going to sit here and pretend to know, I know the exact differences. I think you can probably figure it out by their titles, for the most part. They are stressed, they are tired, their days are going really long, seven days a week. Holidays, the whole nine yards. And we also have one manager managing that show. Dr. Rice is very talented and very good at what he does, but we know he needs some help. And while he's tried to convince us that he can do it and power through, we're going to put some resources in place that you'll be hearing about what that ask might be. But the contact tracers and investigators have a tough job. You know, when we talk about the data that's coming through, the statistics, whether it's those that are infected, how they were infected, and tracing back where the infections came from, it's really hard. Because once these people are on the phone, they answer, we tell them who we are, yeah, you know what happens next, right? They either hang up, or hit the cancel button, or throw their phone in a bucket of water, or whatever it may be. They don't want to talk to us. And even if they do talk to you, they're a little reluctant to tell you where they were, how they got infected, et cetera. So when you look at some of the contact tracing information, as far as the point of origin of the infections, the data can be skewed, there's about 40% that we don't know about. And it makes it really difficult. We believe we've taken care of the language barriers, we have Pajabi speakers, Spanish speakers, Monge speakers, the whole nine yards, we've had those since the beginning, it's worked out well. But it's still a challenge for us. As Steve mentioned, we had another death occur today, 58-year-old female from the side of the river, with a couple of underlying conditions, but rushed to the ER, in the hospital only for a couple of days, and passed away due to COVID-related complications. And that's their sixth death now. And as you know, the hospitals are local hospitals, and those in Sacramento are being Here locally, well, let me, let me go back to the doc first. We feel very comfortable with the doubling of resources, and I have those numbers for you, by the way, those phone numbers that you were asking about, like Councilmember Boomgarden, I'll, I'll get those to you, or deliver them to somebody, or Diana or something. We, we've got to think creatively, a little bit more. You know, we always talk about lessons learned, but this is lessons learned from the day before. Because this pandemic is so unique and it's so wily. And our, our folks, when I say our folks, Sutter and Yuba folks, we are doing everything we can to rearrange schedules, dedicate personnel, and literally, I, you know, I tell the board all the time, that it's, I don't want to take five employees and stick them over there part-time, they got to go do their job the other half of the day, or they do their job two days out of the week that they normally do. Just, just cut right to the heart of it and dedicate them full-time. So maybe we can flatten that curve, maybe we can get ahead of this a little bit. Maybe you stop that one person from getting infected that may have died. And then you make all the difference in the world, right? So our push is to make sure we have enough resources for the public, for our residents, for our businesses, for our own employees. But I think we'll do that, coming soon. With the hospitals, obviously, we have one local hospital here. Dr. Lou is in communication with them every day. Our local clinics as well. And she talked to him about what you saw here, about the order. And we're going to be on that list, it's coming out tomorrow. Was going to come out Thursday, state said they made a mistake, it's coming out Wednesday. So the order will probably become effective, most likely, when Dr. Lou issues it Sunday or Monday. And it covers exactly what's there. We talked about that with Rick Rossin from Adventist, the leaders at Amplia and Sutter. And it's really met with just a few simple words, they're saying, thank God, because they are overtaxed. Adventist right now has 180 beds out of 221 capacity filled. And 20 of those are COVID-related. They have an overall capacity of 63 ICU beds that they can total out of the 221. But they're very worried. When you look at what happened to Shasta Redding Hospital, they went to no capacity a couple days ago. Now they've got a little capacity, but everything is just ebbing and flowing so much, it's very challenging for those healthcare workers. Anyway, and we want to do whatever we can. Dr. Lou, like I said, is working with them constantly, making sure they have PPE, making sure they have the right resources, and in turn, they're being a great resource for us. So what are we doing on the prevention side? As Steve mentioned earlier about the efforts with Latino community, you know, nothing burns me more than the efforts from the state that unfortunately I felt were too late. We recognized this issue weeks ago, and we put measures in place on both sides of the river. And it takes a little while to get things going, but we have some great messaging, some in-person messaging. And we have our YES teams and SCORE teams and the ag community meeting with them to make sure the Latino population is not left behind. We recognize those cultural differences, and it's tough. It's tough for them. Just to not only, from language barriers, barriers to cultural differences, to employment, to larger families, it is very tough. But we're making that outreach, and I think it is really making a difference. And we've heard that it's making a difference. So thank you for your efforts, Dr. Ravelas, Mayor Samayoa from the other side of the river, and Supervisor Flores, and several others, just done a fantastic job. I believe the number was 70 to 75% of the infections, it was about a week ago, I believe, the new ones that were coming in were, were Latinos. And we felt that we got ahead of it, but it just seems like it's, we're still struggling, but we know we're doing a good work. So our YES team that's out there, talking to businesses, our YES team is set up in a way, we've got four dedicated employees, one manager, and three others, like Steve said, speak multilingual languages. They've been out for over a month now. They have made all contacts with all lodging, that's camping, hotels, you name it, everyone 100% covered. We have 240,000 masks being delivered tomorrow, actually. We've already distributed some out for our businesses, we've distributed about 2,000 gallons in care packages of hand sanitizer and other masks as well. I think that number was about 40,000 initially, and then plus we're getting to 240,000 as well. We know your folks on this side of the river, visit our folks on that side of the river, restaurants or businesses, whatever it may be. And with the SCORE team, with the YES team, both of us, I think, are doing a pretty good job of getting those resources out there. We have already notified 187 all of the businesses, we give them a pre-warning about what's coming with the new order, the watch period, and then we go boots on the ground tomorrow. Not only do we message them, we're going boots on the ground tomorrow to inform them of what it'll mean to them moving forward. So having said that, I'm sure your city manager's got much more to cover, and I don't want to take up all the time, but I'd more than happy to answer any questions you may have. But I just can't thank you enough, and I, and I think Steve did already, just the support that you've given us, and all of those employees that are working hard to make sure that this virus is defeated somehow. We'll keep at it, but we can't do without your support, so we thank you for that.
Good question for you, Robert, real quick. First of all, thank you also for everything you guys are doing, we really appreciate the frequent communication. And like Vice Mayor said, this is unprecedented, this is something new, and you're literally learning every day, and responding and adjusting and improving. So regarding, you mentioned this, the capacity of Adventist, and it's getting pretty close. Regarding the surge capacity, I know we had agreements in place with the high schools and gyms. Is that still in effect? And how, do we have anticipated any impact it may have with school potentially, these part-time reopening?
Great question, Mayor, thank you. So as a matter of fact, we had a meeting today. We've been looking at that issue, and we recognize that with the potential of schools opening, again, I emphasize potential of schools opening, we knew we had to think of alternate sites to the alternate sites. So we came up with a couple, three, that are really draft right now with the help of Neil Hay from Sutter County's side, Kevin Allen, and a few of us on the call today. We're making alternative plans for that. Those agreements have expired, Mayor, and so we are planning on next steps. But we know the hospital still has capacity. We know that there's other surge capacity in the community with medical facilities that we've already spoken to, and then the alternate care sites. We hope to have something in place, our target is a little less than two weeks. I mean, I'm not, we didn't just pick a target. Like I say, there's a little science behind it when we talk about it, but Dr. Lou, obviously with what happened in relation to the uptick in infections, a couple, about a couple of weeks after some significant family get-together days, et cetera, this will be a couple of weeks after the Fourth of July holiday, we expect it to still continue.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Through the mayor, obviously, thanks again for your willingness to field our calls, my calls, and the patience with which the answers come. I guess the biggest question I have right now anyway, and this might be one that gets answered tomorrow by Dr. Lou, is the, the thing that's making my text ring off the hook, or my phone ring off the hook right now, is when is this all going to happen? When's this going to go into effect? So the sooner you can get that out, so that we can get that to the business owners, at least within our city and in our region, because we are a region, I think the better. Because they know it's coming, but they just don't know when. And I think that's the biggest ask I have right now. But again, deeply felt thanks for what you're doing. I know you take a lot of bullets, and a lot of arrows, and a lot of knives, and all kinds of other means of, of body harm, but I, for one, recognize the effort that's being put forth. Thanks.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Robert, I cannot thank you enough. And your team, Rachel and Russ, excellent, excellent work. And so however we can help you, and however the YES teams and the SCORE teams can be unified in a way to help our businesses, and I am extremely pleased and thankful and grateful for the multi-language and multicultural aspects. The biggest concern is to reduce the spread, to help reduce that spread, control it, and, and we can do that, we, we definitely can, but we all have to, you know, support each other in this process. And you have been a tremendous leader in this, and your board supervisors have been extremely supportive in all of this. And so for myself directly, I, I would like to thank you, and I'm very grateful for all the work that's been done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Talk to you in the morning, or see you in the morning.
All right, so the next person that's going to come up is Mr. Moody, the Development Services Director. And then after him, it will be Mr. McIntyre, the Community Services Director, to talk about recreation programs.
Thank you.
Okay, so a quick recap regarding the outdoor dining policy. And so with the implementation of this, this new order, that we've, with the restriction of the dine, inside dining, we do have this outdoor dining policy that we have in place, that we put out early May. And so city staff is, is available, and with, we've put it on our website, and we'll also coordinate with Sutter County's YES, SCORE team in order to make sure that goes out and we're available to meet with them. But so there is this outdoor dining policy in place, where we're allowing the utilization of existing parking, just because it's not being used, and why not use it if it's available and to help the business? And so we'll meet on-site, we'll walk the site, you know, make sure we haven't, there's no concerns about ADA, work through any ABC requirements, and then how to work, work this through the social distancing protocol and with the state guidance. And so that is in place, and staff is available to help work through that with businesses. Additionally, in the, if it's not in the parking lot of private property, we're giving them the option to work through it on the city sidewalk, or on some public property if it's adjacent. But we'll work through that through a slightly different process with an encroachment permit, and just making sure we have paths of travel. And so just a quick update regarding City Hall, we remain open Monday through Friday, eight to five. We're monitoring that, depending on how the case count and how, how staff is affected through that, as we work through these different social distancing protocols and how those change. Animal Services is Tuesday through Saturday, nine to 4:30. Mr. McIntyre can expand on that if needed. And with the Police Department lobby recently closing down to public access again, so that will remain closed until further notice. And so other, all other facilities within Yuba City continue to remain closed to the public.
Through the mayor. Mr. Moody, if we can go back a slide, I've got a Through the mayor. Mr. Moody, if we can go back a slide, I've got a couple of questions on this. When this all first happened with COVID and we were ordered to basically shelter and place, the restaurants that were affected were basically the ones that were under the jurisdiction of ABC. And other restaurants were able to continue on as we were walking through things. But this new order means all indoor dining. Doesn't matter if you have alcohol or not. Am I interpreting that correct?
So previously, the order stayed in effect for dine-in, but it was, it was really came down to enforceability versus the state versus the, by county order. And it, and it came down to those with alcohol being enforced by the state. And so with this, this is a state order and, and then it will depend on how Dr. Lou reflects that order. But so every intention I've heard at, at the moment is we're going to match this. And so it basically comes to both food and alcohol. But you, you get into who's going to enforce what. And so it will be a local enforcement if it's just food. If it's, if you get into the alcohol, it could be local and state.
Okay. I know we're trying to thread a needle from across the room with this, but we, we have to make sure that our businesses have at least an opportunity to survive through this. And I was very encouraged with the fact that there may be some grant money coming through. But likewise, we just got the employees back to work. This, we don't have any restrictions really over a percentage of the parking lot they can consume or whatnot. You're, you're working through that as long as it'll, you know, the ride away, fire, safety. We're pretty flexible in that, correct?
Absolutely. And so it's really, let's be realistic and how can we get cars in and out without running into conflicts with, with diners? And, and then really, and we've pushed on that through our working group with UBA City Staff and also with UBA County, that a lot of these rules come down and they're very subjective. What is indoor dining? What does that mean? You know, if I put a pop-up outside, is that still qualified or does it not? Because businesses are struggling, they're trying to figure out how to work under these guidelines and stay open and work in that business. And we're definitely pro-business and we're trying to communicate that and figure out where can they still work within these rules and stay open.
Okay. This is something I've thought of a lot over the weekend because since the governor spoke last week and we saw our numbers going up, I wanted to make sure all of our restaurants had the availability to continue to, to operate. The one thing that I identified is we have a very unique section of our city that has a lot of restaurants and they do not have a whole lot of parking. And that would be our downtown business area. And so I know it's later on the agenda, but the idea hit me to, why don't we look at entertaining the, the idea of instead of just, if this comes to pass, which it sounds like we're going to have it sometime between now and next Monday, that Dr. Lou's going to issue an order and we're going to be to no indoor dining. Not that we're mandating on the DBA, but if they would like, since they have such limited parking down there, to literally turn the Pluma Street into a promenade, kind of indefinitely during this until we can get back to some normal operations to allow our restaurants to have the opportunity and even retail businesses to operate by having their dining in the middle of Pluma Street. And, but again, this would have to be if they wanted it. But we have to say that we're in agreement with it if they wanted to do it. They're already asking us for three dates. It would give them a fighting chance. The governor says indoor dining, let's turn everything into outdoor. Is that something that we could do?
My understanding, we could definitely talk to the city attorney, but I believe with the public works, with the directors authorization under the municipal code and then also later on with emergency operations. I don't know the exact title, Diana, as we called that, but we have the authority to do that.
Yes, it would require another, so later on in the agenda, it's council ratifying the emergency director's order. And so basically it would be the city manager, again, needing to make the order and then that would come back to council at a later date to ratify it.
Okay, those orders, when they typically come back though, don't we have to bring that back, I believe, Mr. Chaffin, within seven days of the order?
Not in this current case.
Okay.
It used to be that a seven-day requirement was in effect for any declaration of local emergency. However, we have already declared a local emergency. And as a result, the director has authority just to issue it outright.
And then we would, we would need to coordinate, make sure we coordinate with police and fire, especially for a long-term closure, that they would still have adequate access to the, the street and businesses.
Okay. I would honestly like us to entertain direction, whatever, to where if the DBA requested, because it's a unique situation, that we would accommodate that because they're already asking for three dates and it's kind of unique. They don't have parking lots to extend into. All they have is the street out in front. So I don't know if that's something we're willing to discuss tonight and give direction or what, because this is on our doorstep.
I think for direction, we have to have it agendized, the specific item agendized. But if our city manager or the coordinator with the title, which he wears that hat, has the ability to do that, I think we're pretty much have a consensus right now that we're okay with that. If there's any other commentary, I'd like to hear that. But the main thing would be to ensure fire and police access. And, you know, we were thinking, you know, what I was envisioning is the jury, the concrete jersey walls and make it look nice for a promenade, if you will. I think that's the word you used. But we have to make sure we can get fire trucks and ambulances and whatnot through there. I don't know that, do you need specific direction or consensus and then to use your authority, Diana?
My, my concern would be if the DBA does not have unanimous support of it. And then we get into a situation where the city's proceeding forward with that and then we have businesses coming to us saying, why are you doing that? And so in terms of direction, it would be, would be helpful to have council support in terms of that threshold as to when, you know, what percentage of the businesses want to proceed. Would we say, okay, we'll do that? Because it will impact access to businesses, it will impact parking. And so if the DBA were to come forward, you know, what is the percentage that's acceptable to then move forward with considering this concept?
Definitely. I think, I think to move forward, the next step would be stipulator that we would confer with the DBA and get a consensus there. I would, I would even recommend that we contact every business on Pluma Street, including the post office and other folks that may be affected by that. But I think there is a consensus.
Through the mayor, I think that the city manager's point is well-taken, having some familiarity with Pluma Street over the years, the many years in fire access. I'm not going to speak for the fire chief, but that's a big, that's an issue. A lot of high-risk, high-value stuff down in that area. So you don't want to impact that. But I think the other piece that I would mention is to go along with the concept is, I think, is great. It's those businesses, a lot of those dining businesses are going to be doing their business in the after hour, after normal business hours. But I think checking in with those that might be impacted by a street closure would be very prudent.
Okay. And then we have, Ms. Drown will be with us in the later agenda item. Can we check with her since she's representing the DBA?
Yes, Chris Ray and Sandy Drown are going to be, are participating now. They might be on the phone line now, but they will be participating in the Plumas Street Summer Marketplace agenda item.
Okay. Do we want to get any input from them now or just on the later agenda item?
Welcome to comment right now. Have they, by chance?
They're on the phone.
They're on the phone.
Oh. Can you say that one more time?
Hi, this is Sandy Drown.
Hi, Sandy.
I want to thank the, hi, thank you Mayor Harris and the council for your time today.
Have a mute, mute the computer.
Yes, Sandy, if you could mute your computer.
Is that better?
Yes, it is.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that. But thank you guys for your time today. A comment from the DBA. Just before I go into this, and I don't want to make it long, I just wanted to share the comments from the DBA that for our city, the police, fire, public works, our city manager Diana and her executive team, to our city council who have been in the past years instrumental to our success and especially now in our current challenges. So just first off, just thanking you guys for stepping up, supporting our local businesses. And just so you guys know, from the, on the DBA's behalf, we do appreciate you. And going to the comment in regards to the DBA, we are currently taking a census of the businesses and as we speak. And so the only thing that would be my concern is, we don't, we can definitely go to every business and we'd want to anyways, but is to start this conversation. If, if it can't happen, then it's kind of a, just having conversations. So I wasn't sure if there was, it would be easier to say that the city is hoping to do this and this is an option. So then you can go to those businesses, talking about hypothetical that might not happen is, is kind of tough and it's a lot of time. So I just don't know if the city, if the city approved that or was okay with that, then it would be easier for us to go to them because we're not talking hypothetical at this point. We're talking that this is what the city wants, is, is offering for us and do we want to take advantage of this opportunity during this shutdown? Does that make sense?
Why? Can we do it without making a vote? Can we do an informal poll? Is anybody opposed to the, at least exploring the idea further? Yes or no? Just all we need right now. Sandy, I think you have consensus that we would be supportive, but we don't want to steamroll or override anything those businesses do. We don't want to accidentally undermine them in any way, in ways that we haven't thought about. But if you're willing to continue with the poll and come back with, and let us know what the consensus is, we'd, we'd be happy to participate in something with you.
Okay. So I would let them know that the city is in, this is an option that the city is okay with.
Yes. I, yeah.
Through the mayor.
Yeah, we have one more comment. One second.
I do. I think we better have the police and fire department weigh in before.
That will be, that would be, before we finalize it, yes, for sure.
But I, I think.
If they, if you care to comment right now, Jesse, if you're prepared to do so.
Also, I just want to note that I believe Chief Landon's on the phone as well.
Oh, good. Good. Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, the fire department's willing to examine and take a look at that. However, a site plan so that we can identify access in and out because as Vice Mayor mentioned, some very high-value locations in there. And it is a kind of a tight fit. So it's more of analyzing a site plan for us to determine that.
Makes sense. And Chief Landon, if you're on the line, would you care to comment on anything?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I guess so. I'm trying to mute my thing. All that, just to tell you that I echo Jesse's comments that we're more than welcome to explore everything, to do what we have to, to make the businesses successful. And we just want to have a say at the end of the day, but we certainly are in this together.
Thank you very much. And Jesse, would it be your role to contact Bi County and bring them in the loop as well? Is that something?
In regards to working with Bi County ambulance, absolutely. We would plan that out and pre-plan it ahead of time so that we knew exactly in the event of any medical emergency.
Just to let them know we're doing what to, correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. My only last comment on that is, because this was just an idea that hit me. And if it doesn't work, then like with everything else, if the DBA decides it doesn't work for them and their majority's wanted, then let's take it back down. Let's don't hinder them. So, thank you, guys.
Through the mayor.
Does this mean that we're actually, we're wanting to shut the street down? Is what we're wanting to do? That's the goal?
Well, we're not wanting to. We're willing to consider it as a potential option to assist our businesses in the event they're required to shut down indoor dining.
Okay. I want to talk on the public works side of this. You know, we're talking concerning about a short budget fall and stuff like this, and us trying to save money. We got to pay public works employees to go out there to shut the street down and open it back up if they do these things. So, and only cones and so on and so forth. So this is all an expense to us. So we got to count in on that also for being an expense.
Yeah, I don't believe it's going to be a daily open and close is what we're discussing. It'll be something temporarily permanent.
So we're just saying like once, once a week?
It'll be a static, static barriers or, but as long as we can allow emergency equipment to still get through.
Okay. But the employees will still be setting this stuff up and taking it down?
It'll be a one-time thing.
Or just a one-time thing?
A one-time thing and it's closed until we open it back up.
Okay.
Not just, I always forget what those signs are, those sandwich boards, not just that and some cones. It'll be something that looked, well, temporarily permanent, but it's, it'll look nice and official and things like that. That's what we're envisioning.
So, you know, we also got the transit authority involved in this too. The buses go down.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
That's a very good point. Thank you for that.
Yeah. Okay. Because they have designed routes to there. They have.
We have the, the idea man right here that's on the board. So we can bring that up.
So am I.
And you are too.
Okay.
That's a good call. Thank you for the input.
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, throw these all out there while we're thinking about these issues. Okay.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
All right. I'll turn it over to Brad to discuss parks.
Good evening, Mayor. Brad McIntyre, your Community Services Director. Just a couple of updates and reminders for our parks. Regency Park, Shanghai Garden have splash pads. They have been open. We did have a situation where we were getting too many people at Regency Park and so we reduced it by an hour and informed people that they needed to disperse. I mean, that seemed to be, and that was about a week and a half ago. And that has worked well so far. So we've stayed with 11 to 7. Our playgrounds continue to be closed. There's signage on all of them. In fact, we spend a lot of staff time every morning, about two hours taking care of the signage, gets ripped up, we have to go find it in garbage cans, other places. And so then we put it back in the parks. So I do want to remind our public that it is, playgrounds are still closed. For a little good news, staff has started the process of providing swim lessons. We've been promoting it since last week. Just a little bit of information, these are two-week sessions, 30 minutes per session, and it would take place Monday through Friday. Their concept is one instructor per three children in the pool. To register for individuals, they can go to ubacity.net or they can call Gaoxi Aquatic Park at 822-4655, or they can contact City Hall at 822-4650. We have been registering participants for the last two days. And as of right now, we have over 130 registered participants. So it's getting, it seems like the public is responding to it. We will have certainly as many COVID protocols in place to protect the participants, our staff and the parents. I want to back up just a little bit. We also have in process the camp, offering summer camp that is pending at this particular time. UBA City Unified School Board District, as we speak, will be talking and voting upon an agreement where we'd be offering that at Gray Avenue. So if anybody is watching this now, I'd, we will have something out first thing tomorrow morning. I'll get a text this evening and then we are, we will put something out if we are going to proceed with camp, which would start next week. It will be limited to 45 individuals per week, ages six through 12. Again, we will have what we call the pod. It's outdoors, obviously, as well. One rec leader per nine children. We will, or hopefully, will be utilizing the MP room as well, but for short periods of time, depending on when it's, if it's really hot. Each participant through their, through UBA City Unified will also provide free breakfast, free lunch, and give weekend bags to go as far as food is concerned as well. I'd gladly answer any questions you may have about either of those two opportunities. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad. All right. Let me see this real quick. Regarding public comment on item number two, I do have. one here. Do we have any more besides the one that we got earlier?
Yes, we've had some come in on the computer also.
Okay. Why don't we read those first? And then, just for the record, I'm going to, we have other items here, too, but we will limit the, keep the time limits strictly of three and five minutes.
Yes. And also, any of the presentations that have been sent in, if they go longer, they will be posted to our website so people can read them there.
Yes, thank you.
So, if we don't have enough time to finish.
All right.
Okay. So, I'll start with the one that came in from Karen Hess. And I think we have that up on computer. Yes. Okay. This is Karen Hess of Uba City on item number two, COVID-19 in the community. Uba City is epicenter in Uba City cases. The PHO, which I believe she means Public Health Organization blames the number of cases on community spread. What are the Uba City case zeros for community spread? Business slash work transmission, another party slash gathering? I suspect the widespread business and consumer, or customer noncompliance is playing an important role here, which came first, the chicken or the egg? Communication is not effective. Local messaging is not reaching locals. Unaware of a local mask order of May 4th. Unaware of required business protocols. During reopening, unaware of phases. EOC not effective despite two PIOs with media experience. If the message isn't being received and processed, change the messenger, change the message, change the medium, or possibly change all three. EOC not effective on other fronts. Email addresses and telephone are black holes. Complaints do not result in follow-up. Businesses with legitimate questions don't get follow-up. Does the EOC have cultural competency to address noncompliance? Socioeconomic, political ideology, race, ethnic, language, educationally disadvantaged, poor choice of news sources, and other. Uba City can chart its own future. It appears as though the Uba City has abdicated to the ineffective Bye County EOC. Address business noncompliance, including complaints by public. Enforce face coverings by public. Escalate EOC failures. Push for new ICN reorganization. Business employer noncompliance can be addressed by city without EOC. Require submission of business protocols for review. Recruit qualified people and swear in as volunteer disaster workers to assist in review of business licensee paperwork for accept or reject. Target high-group businesses first. Suspend licenses for not providing protocols. We can't afford to fail. Continued illness and fear holds back the economy from recovering. Masks go together with reopening. In parentheses, New York Governor Como. Adopt no-mask, no-service mindset. Parenthesis, LA Mayor Garcetti. Enforce businesses noncompliance using the leverage of business licensing and other means. Given the city's past experience with Mr. Louie, adopt a resolution that the city will not tolerate false claims of medical exemptions. And then, we have three comments that have come in on the computer. The first one is from Thomas Burns of Uba City. Actually, he's put in two different ones, so they're both, the ones I'll read are from Thomas Burns. There is a lot of people like me who believe that this pandemic has been hyped up to the max. As passionate as some are about the so-called pandemic, there are people like me that are just as passionate that it is extremely blown out of proportion. There has been a huge amount of lies by the mainstream media. All credibility has been lost. And then, the next one has come in from Tony Kerlin. Any thought to businesses that are not in the restaurant sector? Would this assist all businesses or just the restaurant industry?
That was reference our conversation surrounding Pluma Street?
I believe so, but he is talking about other businesses that you're reaching out, wanting to help them, and he wants to know if you would be assisting all businesses or just the restaurant industry.
Okay. Any others?
Not on this item.
Okay.
Through the mayor, I just want to add, I would like to say to Karen Hess, thank you for your presentation. I heard your comments, and I appreciate that. Also, Thomas Burns, I appreciate your comments, and thank you for giving us some insights on your views. And Tony, I would like to say to you that I represent the Council on the Economic Development Corporation, and one of the things as representative on that committee and board, we are looking at other businesses in addition to restaurants. So, I would just like to share that as well. Thank you.
All right. So, that would conclude item number two, response to COVID, and I appreciate definitely all the input from the community, staff, and the council. And as we move forward, you know, I would hope that we would continue to manage our expectations from staff regarding the impact, maybe, I mean, we have our list of priorities, and we have things that we want to do. We're clearly all agreed upon what they are, but as ideas come up, and they probably will, in anticipation of that, that we manage the expectation of staff. I mean, they've taken a hit on their budgets. I know Development Services is definitely stretched really thin, and we're even trying to hopefully get them some more help. But everything we do that might not necessarily be on the front burner of a priority has an impact on them, that would take them away from those front burner ideas. And I just, as we move forward, we all have ideas and consider that we, before we make our phone calls, if at all, if it does happen, to task them with doing something we consider the impact we have on that. I'm not saying we're not. I'm just saying that when the ideas come up, that we, just a reminder that we keep that in mind, because they are pretty stressed and wound pretty thin. And thank you again for everything, and everybody does. You're working really hard, and we really appreciate it. Moving on to number three. Appearance of interested citizens due to the coronavirus. Comments are to be provided by email to cityclerk@ubacity.net. Oral comments by phone or in person are not currently available. And we do have some public communication. I have a question. There's, I have four here. Apparently, it's a long one, and we have four people speaking. Tricia, are they on the phone, or are we to read what they have here?
We are to read what they have here.
We are to read. Okay. And so, that's the parts one, two, three, and four. And then, the other one from Equity for Uba City? That's a separate one?
The Equity of Uba City submitted, actually, all of these. They're different representatives from Equity of Uba City.
There's five parts, then?
Well, there's four parts that continue, but there's also two others that have submitted, but they're also representatives of Equity for Uba City.
So, the one from Equity for Uba City, that goes with the other emails I have here, parts one, two, three, and four. They're all going to be read in succession?
I'm actually, it's going to change it up just a little bit because we have one from Alisa Rojas-Palado, and she's also has down on her thing Equity for Uba City.
I think that's the one I have here. I'm just trying to figure out.
There's another one from Roberto A., and he's also a representative of Equity from Uba City. So, actually, all six that I have in front of me are part of the Equity for Uba City, but four of them are basically parts one, two, three, and four.
That's what I was trying to get.
So, I'll read those.
I didn't know if this one went with one, two, three, and four, so it's a five, or it's a separate thing together. Regardless, you'll have five minutes to read one, two, three, four, and five. I'm going to relieve you of the burden, not the burden, but the task, and I'm going to read Roberto A.'s first.
Okay.
All right? And then, we'll move on to one, two, three, and four.
No, Alisa Rojas-Palado, hers, and then, one, two, and three, and four together. Yes.
Right. Okay. So, we're good. And so, now, we are in, just for clarification, we're on item number three, public communication. I do have one in front of me from Roberto A., and then, we're going to read another one from Alisa Rojas-Palado, followed by parts one, two, three, and four of another presentation, and then, we will follow that up with any commentary that comes in while we're reading these things. All right? So, if we can hit the timer for me, and I'm going to read this. Dear Uba City Council, my name is Roberto, and I am a representative of Equity for Uba City using these three minutes, he actually has five, to discuss the importance of allocating funds toward mental health services. While there are many important services to Uba City's daily operations, mental health services must be funded with greater emphasis to avoid having the wrong people respond to those in need, especially to the people living in poverty. As Uba City's poverty rate is about 16% according to census.gov's 2019 data, children in poverty are at greater risk of mental health and behavioral issues such as impulsiveness, aggressiveness, attention deficit, hyperactivity disorder, and conduct disorder. Common emotional problems include feelings of anxiety, depression, and low self-esteem, which may lead to risky behaviors such as smoking, using alcohol, and drugs. The chronic stress of living in poverty has been shown to affect concentration and memory, which may affect the ability to learn and succeed in school. Thus, children living in poverty are more likely to have difficulty in school and drop out. This is directly quoted from the Uba Sutter Mental Health Plan. Why am I mentioning poverty and schooling? This directly affects those with mental health disorders and need proper attention and care. Our schools serve as a safe havens for students. Our city must provide adequate services for struggling students. We must avoid students resorting to such measures of drug abuse rather than having them neglect issues in their lives. Although Uba Sutter has spent more for crisis counselors and staff overall for mental health support, it's not enough. These mental health services need to be spread to our schools to best support students with the right counselors and to overwhelm those school counselors that juggle multiple students with high pressures. Our area sees 11.9% of hospital stays are from mental diseases and disorders among those under 18. This number may be insignificantly small, however, it is one of the top five diagnoses in Sutter County. While I may not have time to show data and statistics, I hope this brings awareness to the importance of providing more funding for mental health services in our area. We are collectively responsible for shaping our next generation's, generation of successful people in Uba City. That is from Roberto A.
And whenever you're ready, we can begin with the others.
All right. This is, this is from Alisa Palado, or Alisa Rojas-Palado, and her title, actually, she's a student at the University of California, Los Angeles. Defunding the Police is a Movement to Abolish Police. A Quick Guide to Reimagining Public Safety. Reimagining public safety involves following a community-led safety model that includes investing in mental health and harm reduction approaches. Rather than funding police to bring violence and harm to our communities, we want to invest in communities themselves to determine what they need and offer them support in executing those programs. Specific initiatives that could be included in this category: family counseling, restorative justice programs, gang prevention, intervention, recovery without police involvement, domestic violence prevention, intervention, recovery without police involvement. Why defund the police? By defunding the police, we can reassess resources currently being invested in policing and the overall system incarceration, and put that money towards services that are actually, that actually work to keep our community safe. It's a divest-invest model. Divest from policing, invest in our communities. If we don't need more police, what do we need? We need affordable housing to compact and racist gentrification in our neighborhoods. We need jobs for young people in communities of color. We need to solve the growing problem of homelessness in the city. We need unarmed, non-law enforcement to respond to calls. This means utilizing people with specialized training who are better equipped than the police to handle situations dealing with mental health, medical emergencies, domestic violence, homelessness, and more. Defunding the police isn't the end goal, but a first step. Defunding the police is a first step in a transformation new approach that involves funding grassroots initiatives for restorative justice, housing, healthcare, employment, and other services. When people say defund the police, they are calling on city leaders to recognize their citizens as people who deserve to live in safe, abundant communities, free from violent policing. All right. Now, we have parts one, two, three, and four. And part one is from Serene here, and she's from Uba City. And she's part of the Equity for Uba City. We surveyed the Uba City community recently and have compiled some statistics about what people are thinking. All data has come from Google surveys sent via social media and email. There is a sample of 84 people who took the survey. Testimonials, opinions were directly copied and pasted and were not altered. From our data, we can conclude that there is a great amount of support for more resources to be allocated to programs such as education, healthcare, environment, mental health, et cetera. In the following slides, there are demographics of the people who took the survey. Most people who took the survey are between the ages of 18 and 25 and have attended YCUSD, so Uba City Unified School District Public School. So, it can be concluded that they have experience with the education system in Uba City. Inhabited status, their question was, are you inhabitant, or have you been an inhabitant of Uba City? And you can see it on the board. They have 92.9 say yes. Demographic zip code, what is your zip code? And it's up there on the board. Majority are 95993 and 95991. Uba City Unified School District schooling and education level, and that's up on the pie chart up there, and you have it in front of you. Gender and sexual orientation, and you have, again, that in front of you. Age, the majority are 18 to 25, as she said earlier. Race, ethnicity, yeah, you can look into the pie chart on that. Financial insecurity and housing insecurity. Employment. Food insecurity. Immunocompromised. Place of residence. And that's part one. Part two, the Voices of Uba City. This was submitted by Equity for Uba City, so I'm not sure if there's a person or just the group. just a group. Again, there's a lot of charts and graphs that you'll have in front of you that you could look over, and there's some on the, they're behind me, too. Universal needs and crisis management. And the next page, again, goes through child and youth development, environmental justice and climate change, emergency preparedness, and they were asked to rank their priorities on a scale of zero to four. The next graph shows universal needs and crisis management, and public health and Again, the bar graph is right in front of you. Built environment, they're looking at public works, fixing potholes, et cetera, and survey respondents were asked to rank their priorities based on a scale of zero to four. And again, you have that in front of you. Law enforcement, armed policemen for nonviolent crimes participate in UBS Sutter Gang Enforcement and SWAT, and they were asked to rank their priorities. And the next one is law enforcement. They're asking police in school. Again, they were ranking their priorities from zero to four. A reimagined community, they're looking at restorative justice models, community care workers, gang violence intervention workers, and they did their ranking again. And community safety reimagined, again, they've got their numbers there. Their conclusions are, as shown on the previous slides, it can be concluded that there is a wavering support for money to be taken away from law enforcement. Instead, people want more money invested in parks and recreation, public works, libraries, public transportation, and the fire department. A huge majority of the people want more money towards public health, healthcare, environmental justice, and climate change, child and youth development, and emergency preparedness. In addition, in terms of community safety, majority of people want more money towards community care workers, gang violence intervention workers, domestic violence workers from the community, mental health and wellness, family counseling, community-led crisis response workers, restorative justice models, community healing circles, alternates to policing, reparations to victims, and community investment and neighborhood impairment. And now we're on Voices of UBS City. This is part three. This was submitted by Jaylen Soto, and she's also a student at the University of California, Los Angeles. Opinions to the questions, please feel free to share your thoughts, what else the budget could be used towards in the community. Preventive healthcare, we need to have stricter health measures such as no more huge public gatherings and parties, or anything that will help spread the virus even more. Also, more money and resources towards schools. Teachers are literally having to pay for their own supplies, and the school district is experiencing a $10 million loss while the police is being funded more. Another comment. Rather than using tax dollars to fund the police force at an overwhelming rate, I would suggest that all the funds be reallocated to benefit the entirety of the UBS City community. Investment should be inserted in the education system, parks and recreation, food and housing, security for those who are less fortunate. This includes the homeless population, healthcare emergency services, fire department, EMT, public transit, mental health, public events, and upkeep of public property. Our brief list would increase the overall happiness of the community as well as decrease the need for the police department. Our tax dollars should directly benefit the people that inhabit this town. Next comment, money should be used towards education, improving teacher salaries, improving educational opportunities, and more community classes, maybe general classes about healthcare, law, et cetera, considering the majority of the population doesn't have adequate knowledge of many subjects, and it's hard, often used against them. More opinions. Part of the budget, I believe, should be proceeded to Gray Avenue Middle School. I work there, after-school programs, and that school is probably the most underfunded school out of all the other schools in the City Unified School District. The school is very low poverty and has many students facing everyday problems. Multiple students are homeless, their parents in prison, and are dealing with raising their siblings. Most of the kids grew up at a young age. Another part of the budget needs to go towards the homeless people in this area. The Habitat for Humanity should be donated money. There is a huge homeless population here that many people do not realize. One more category that would be beneficial is for mental health. I have struggled with mental health, and I know it's extremely expensive, and the resources are hard to find. I need people, I think people need to have easier resources and granted mental health benefits. More opinions. I believe these.
That's three minutes.
That's three minutes. All right. I'll move on to part four. Okay. Part four, Voices of UBS City, was submitted by Hector Diaz of UBS City. Testimonials to the question, please feel free to share any experience you have had personally or witnessed in which UBS City policemen treated you or someone else unfairly. This includes experiencing racist behavior, insults, or unnecessary force. First comment. Wrongfully accused members of my family for involvement in shootings, drug deals, and stolen property forfeiting a description that have had no connection other than the AR Mexican men. I've been driven around by many adults in my life, but the person who gets pulled over consistently or consistently for no apparent reason is my grandfather, who wears a turban. I don't believe that's just a coincidence. Next. Domestic violence cases are some of the most dangerous calls in the county. Explicit, sending social workers. I am always second priority due to the color of my skin. I am looked at as if I'm illiterate. I've been called racial slurs as well as been racially profiled. I have not had a run-in with the police department that involved racial slurs, insults, et cetera. I try to stay away from police as I fear for my safety when they are around. I'm sure that if I hadn't encountered police more, I would have experience related to the prompt. More testimonials. I have only seen UBS City cops be generally nice, in my experience, but that does not erase the fact that the police in this country have too much power over underprivileged groups. The duties that the cops are tasked with that don't directly respond to violent threats should be instead directed towards other trained professionals. For example, there are cops who have to attend to the homeless drug-using population. There was a time on Second Street where a police officer was gently asking drug-using homeless man to relocate. This is a common occurrence. While the cop was nice about it, there are other individuals like social workers better equipped to give these people the mental and physical help they need. It is so important to fund such initiatives. Cops have the responsibility to attend to so many different types of issues. I think it is important to divert the budget to better fund the arts in the community, such as art classes as well as the rest of the community. Next testimonial. I was walking with my friend, and he was wearing red, and a cop pulled over.
That's three minutes.
Okay. That's three minutes. And they, these will be posted to our website, the ones that couldn't complete reading.
Just confirming, they don't get five if they've submitted ahead of time? They don't?
There has to be 24 hours.
Oh, they weren't within 24?
They did not come out 24 hours before.
Just making sure.
Yeah, there were only a couple that came before.
And you say there were not more submitted? No more comments?
No more comments on this. Now, we do have some things on the computer. As morality declines and the personal work ethic declines, the police state rises. As more people become more dependent instead of independent, the police state rises. We have lost the rugged individualism that was part of this nation's inception. Listening to prior comments on defunding the police, it is clear that we have, and it's cut off, so I'm not sure what the rest of that was, and that was from Thomas Burns. And then he has another one that came in three minutes later. There is plenty of work for anyone who is willing to work. As an employer for over 25 years, I have seen less and less people who want to work. Many want a check but do not want to work. And again, that was Thomas Burns, the second one. And now from Karen Haas. Oh, she just had a comment, okay. All right. That's all I have right now.
May I please ask you to read Tom's first comment? I missed that one.
The first one on the morality. Okay.
The one just now, his, he had two?
Right. The first one was, as morality declines and the personal work ethic declines, the police state rises. As more people become dependent, become more dependent instead of independent, the police state rises. We have lost the rugged individualism that was part of this nation's inception. Listening to the prior comments on defunding the police, it is clear to me that we have, and it says MO, and I don't know the rest of it.
Okay.
Oh, will it? Okay, sorry. Okay. Oh, okay. I see it's down below. It is clear to me that we have more and more losers who want to feed on others.
Thank you.
That's the rest of his comment.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
All right, so confirming, for item number three, we have nothing further, either written or online.
Nothing further.
All right. Now we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these three items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual item, or excuse me, action. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
None that I've received.
All right. So consent calendar consists of items four, five, and six.
Move to approve.
Thank you. First, and I believe Manny was first on the second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, Mayor. It's because your right ear works better than your left.
What?
Exactly. Thank you.
Would you like to be on record? Is it that big of a deal?
It's okay, Mayor.
All right. Then we'll move on to number seven. Fire Local 3793 Side Letter Presented by Natalie.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight I am presenting the Local 3793 Side Letter that extends the Local 3793 Memorandum of Understanding to December 31, 2021. The Local 3793 MOU was approved on February 4, 2020, and expired June 30, 2020. Local 3793 has requested an extension to December 31, 2021 via the proposed side letter. There is no fiscal impact, and there is an economic reopeners for the first part of 2021 to discuss the city's financial position. At this time, I will take any questions that you may have.
Public comment on item number seven?
No, we have not.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Move to adopt resolution approving a side letter with Fire Local 3793 effective July 1, 2020, extending the memorandum of understanding until December 31 of 2021.
Second.
All right. I have a first and a second by Councilmember Shaw. Those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
And opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much, Natalie. Number eight, wastewater treatment facility effluent discharge outfall diffuser project advanced treatment study and project scope changes.
Good evening again. Again. All right. So this is a very long title, and it's fitting for the complexity of the subject. So it's the wastewater treatment facility outfall diffuser advanced treatment study and other scope work changes. So the wastewater treatment facility outfall diffuser, so here's our wastewater treatment plant. This is the Feather River. And right now, our existing diffuser is located right here. We have effluent disposal ponds located on the east side of the Feather River. And what happened is in 2011, the river actually changed to where it impacted our ability to use the outfall diffuser, and so for the most part, we are discharging to the effluent disposal ponds, except when we have high water events. With the Orville incident, that exacerbated the situation, and so we have issues with this existing diffuser in that it's really not a viable, feasible, long-term option. So through, council previously awarded a contract to Jacobs, and they were analyzing the location of a new outfall diffuser. Originally, we were thinking it was going to be in about this vicinity. Now, based upon the studies that have been conducted, it's looking like it's going to be, the most stable portion of the river is further to the south. So with that, as noted, since 2011, the city has been studying potential replacement options for the outfall diffuser pipe. In July of 2018, city council awarded the contract to Jacobs for pre-designed design, environmental permitting, right-of-way acquisition, and bidding services. I want to say at that time, the estimate for the project, we were thinking it was going to be about the $11 million range. Also, during, since then, we've had an MPDS permit renewal through the state, and with that, we put in the permit that we were planning to relocate the outfall diffuser with the anticipated beginning operation of fall of 2022. So we proceeded down that path. Jacobs completed the pre-designed report, 30% design, and then based upon the, having to relocate it further south, the complexity of the situation, the estimate is now in the range of 25 million with an upper end of 35 million. Now, you can imagine at the 30% design, there's a lot of unknowns, and so they put a lot of contingency in there. But when we heard 35 million, honestly made our heart stop for a moment, and then, you know, we need to take a step back. And so what we're requesting is that, in order to really analyze what is the best option to move forward, it's not that we have $35 million. So even if we were to move forward with this project today, we don't have $35 million. But is that the best use of the funds? And so we want to take a step back, have Jacobs do an advanced treatment study, because ultimately, at some point in time, the state will request that we upgrade our facility so that we do advanced treatment, so that we have higher quality. We have high-quality effluent, but we have an even higher quality effluent. With, if we were able to do that, then we could do a side bank discharge into the Feather River. Wouldn't require the diffuser, which is required to get, achieve dilution. And so what we are asking is to have Jacobs do this advanced treatment study. It will compare relative costs, advantages, disadvantages, and then, you know, just at the currently configured, how the wastewater treatment facility is currently configured compared to what could we do with that amount of money? Is there the option to utilize that to get us towards that advanced treatment and ultimately get to that side bank discharge and get away from the outfall diffuser? So it's anticipated that the study will be completed in December of 2020. At that point in time, we would bring the results back to council because we're going to be a decision point. Do we move forward with a different project? Do we proceed? And, you know, the option of doing nothing, not, like I mentioned, not a long-term viable option. Those six ponds only have so much capacity. As we hopefully grow into the future, we will exceed that capacity. It gets exceedingly more difficult to take a pond down to do maintenance. And so, we are in a situation that we are going to have to do something at some point in time. The fiscal impact is that we have initial contract amount of two, almost $3 million, which includes $200,000 in contingency. We've executed amendment to the contract to complete the preliminary design. So total spent as of May 22nd is $1.64 million. The request before you tonight is not, we're not requesting additional funds. We're just requesting reallocate some of the funds that we have programmed towards this advanced study and then the additional scope of work. So with that, the recommendation is to adopt a resolution to award amendment to the professional services agreement with CH2M Hill Engineers, which is really Jacobs, to include the advanced treatment study and other necessary project scope changes and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment following approval as to form by the city interest with the finding that it's in the best interest of the city. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Once, can you, can you explain the real necessity behind all this as an everyday consumer of the community?
Yes, I can really summarize it. This is, this is going to be a bit blunt, but...
Please do.
When you flush your toilet, you want it to go away, and you don't ever have to deal with it, basically. And so, for us to be able to operate the wastewater treatment facility, it's not like we have storage capacity there. So as flows come into the treatment plant, we have to treat them, and we have to discharge them. We don't have capacity to hold it for days. And so, this project is necessary because our, what happened in 2011 would further happen in 2017. The choices available to us are getting more restricted. Not only that, but then the regulations from the state are getting more restrictive. And so, as we move forward, we know at some point in time, we're going to have to move towards advanced treatment. What does, what does it mean when I say advanced treatment? That's tertiary treatments. It's additional treatment processes added to the plant to improve the quality of the water even more so that you can discharge directly to the Feather River. You don't have to worry about dilution. You don't have to have it go through an evaporation-percolation process. And so, if you, you can either pay to install this new outfall diffuser so you get dilution and place a bet that the state's going to allow us to continue to do that for years to come, or you can pay to upgrade the facility to do advanced treatment. You're still, you might be able to, at that point, modify the existing discharge to side bank, but you would still have improvements associated with that. And we've been successful in the past in terms of coordinating with the state to get our NPDS permit, which we have to have to be able to operate the plant. And so, we are, we are at the mercy of the state when it comes to that. We have been successful in coordinating with them to be able to continue to utilize our outfall diffuser and do secondary treatment, which is a benefit to our customers because we're not having to put the money towards the expensive upgrades, which then impacts our rates. But there will be a day that we don't have that opportunity. So as we discussed, the $35 million project, which will directly impact rates, we just felt it was prudent to bring this forward and take a step back.
I'm glad that you explained it so whoever's watching, they have a better understanding of the actual, it's a precursor to hopefully determine if there is a need to spend that 35 million, or is it, could it be less? And so, I appreciate you doing that and explaining it. Thank you.
Diana, is there a difference between advanced treatment and secondary treatment? Are those one and the same?
Different. So secondary treatment is the level that we treat right now.
Okay.
Advanced treatment is additional treatment processes that you're bringing online, whether it's membrane filtration, you know, different other, other processes, expensive processes to run the wastewater through so that you have a higher, even higher-quality effluent water that's discharged.
And just for clarity purposes, that these are, all these processes, which are very expensive, are mandated by the state? We do this?
Well, so right now, our, the secondary treatment that we provide is, we're allowed to do that under our current NPDS permit, which we just recently renewed. There's no guarantee going forward as we continue through the five-year process for renewal that the state would continue to allow that. We're becoming, it's unusual, very extremely unusual for an agency to be able to operate the way that we are.
We are, right.
And that's, that's thanks to previous utilities director, Bill Lewis, who really fought hard with the state for us to be able to utilize dilution.
But the day is coming, so be thinking ahead. It's prudent to be thinking about it right now.
Right.
And if memory serves, when I went on the tour, we were already putting the water back in the river cleaner than when we pulled it out.
Correct.
Yeah, which is, which is great. So thank you very much. All right, any public comment on the item?
None received.
All right. That being said, we're here for a motion.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution to award amendment to the professional services agreement with CH2M Hill Engineers, Inc., to include advanced treatment study and other necessary project scope changes and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment following approval as to from the city attorney with the findings that it's the best interest of the city.
Second.
All right, first and second. First by Manny, second by Councilmember Espandoa. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? None. Thank you very much. And number nine, Diana, again, Pluma Street Summer Marketplace.
Yes.
Excuse me, Diana, through the mayor?
Yes.
Before we start this, with everything going on in our community and the state, is there any way that it'd be possible for council to table this till the next meeting? Wait a couple of weeks and see what happens? And then, we could further and discuss this two weeks from now to give it a chance? Because I'd hate to have this approval, and then it gets shut down immediately once, you know, and it's, if it's for the citizens of the community, yes, it is. And I'm all for it with the DBA. But with the way the, the world is right now, in the city and the state, I'd like to table this if it's all possible.
It is possible. If we could take a consensus on that, I'd be happy to entertain that. I would add that we could, we could possibly approve it in order to streamline things so they can keep moving on track contingent upon nothing making, going worse. And we, long as we comply with the current state and local orders.
Okay.
If that is acceptable to you?
Acceptable to me, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Diana.
Okay, thank you. So at the last meeting, brought forward a request from the DBA to a concept that they had called the Pluma Street Summer Marketplace with the proposal to close Pluma Street from Church Street to Bridge Street. Originally, they had planned a date in June. Instead, they've changed it to July 18th, August 8th, and then an undecided date in September. And it would be from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. They also requested, submitted a sponsorship application to utilize the $7,500 that the city had previously provided towards the summer stroll to be utilized towards these three events. The funds would be used to purchase face masks, handwashing stations, rental of security and entertainment. Also, the request included an in-kind request valued at $2,531.70 for public work to close Pluma Street. So at the June 16th council meeting, council expressed support for the marketplace contingent upon the following. So submission of a formal sponsorship application, which they submitted. Authorization from Dr. Lou. And so, I highlighted this one in red because I just want to note, Dr. Lou is not going to provide a written authorization. What Dr. Lou did is through John Flo of Sutter County Public Health, provided guidelines to the DBA. And so, the DBA has been working with John Flo, and they've confirmed that they can meet the guidelines. And as mentioned previously, Sandy and Chris are on the line, and they can, you know, provide more information related to this. And then, we also, the city attorney noted last time that this would require an order from the Director of Emergency Services authorizing the temporary waiver of municipal code and entitlement restrictions. And so, the order is included, and council would be basically confirming the order. So with that, the recommendation is to confirm the Director of Emergency Services order for authorizing the temporary waiver of certain municipal code and entitlement restrictions for impacted businesses on Pluma Street and approve the sponsorship of the Pluma Street Summer Marketplace. One thing to note with the, the sponsorship is that it can either come from the funds set aside for sponsorship, or if it didn't come from that, it would come from the Streets Division operating budget. And I know that there's a council ad hoc committee that's going to be reviewing the various accounts. So that's not a decision necessarily that has to be made today, but it is just something to consider. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Or as I noted, Sandy and Chris are on the line. And thank you again for their patience for staying on the line to get to this item.
Any comment from the public?
None received.
All right, any from up here? Nothing? All right, I would just add that if we could approve it contingent upon we comply with all state and local orders that make, may come to pass between now and the, and the actual events. If the council is amicable to that, whoever would make the motion?
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Yes, perhaps it could be contingent upon not getting worse than the emergency director's discretion. That way, she would be able to make the determination based on a day-to-day basis if things change at the last moment.
Okay, that's a legal way of saying, I think that's the same intent, which makes sense. So it would be at emergency director's discretion, which I'm sure your discretion will be based upon anything that changes. Is that correct, Shannon?
Yes, please.
We, are you clear on that, Diana? Okay.
Yes.
Make a motion.
Go ahead, Dave. I think you were going to do it.
Oh, it doesn't matter. Go ahead, Manny.
Okay, to confirm the Director of Emergency Services order authorized and temporary waiver of certain municipal code and entitlement restrictions for impacted businesses on Pluma Street, approve the sponsorship for the Pluma Street Summer Marketplace, and what our city attorney also just mentioned.
Okay, which, which means based on the emergency director's discretion?
Emergency director's discretion, yes, sir.
Changing.
I'll second.
All right, first and second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
And opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much. Diana, and we're back for number 10. Adoption of an ordinance of the city, UBA City imposing a ban on the establishment and operation of a needle. It says exchange here, a needle, needle exchange program within UBA City.
Through the mayor. I need to recuse myself as I did the other time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll give you a couple of seconds here.
The California Department of Public Health is authorized by Health and Safety Code Section 121349 to approve a needle exchange program. CDPH has authorized UBA Sutter Harm Reduction and Community Outreach to provide syringe services within UBA and Sutter Counties. The details related to the authorization are that it's effective May 11th, 2020 through May 11th, 2022, and may apply for renewal before the end of the two-year period. Syringe services may be provided at the following locations. So UBA County is at Harmony Health on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. A mobile location in UBA County area bound by the UBA River, F Street, and Second Street, extending as far west as Second Street Monday, on Mondays from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. And then, in Sutter County, the mobile location, an area bound by the 9,800 block of Second Street, in the area where Second Street and Levy Road merge, extending as far west as the Feather River Edge, Monday from 11:30 AM to 3:00 PM. The ordinance was introduced to council on June 16th. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors adopted a similar ordinance on June 23rd. The proposed ordinance has the authority to enact and enforce ordinances, or the city council has authority to enact and enforce ordinances and regulations for the public peace, health, and welfare of the city's residents. Absent a local regulation, a needle exchange program may be operated in virtually any location in the city. And so, by adopting an ordinance, needle exchange programs will be classified as a public nuisance, and a ban will be imposed on the establishment and operation of such programs within the city. So as noted, the ordinance was introduced on June 16th, and the Sutter County Board of Supervisors adopted similar ordinance on June 23rd. So the recommendation is to adopt an ordinance of the city council imposing a ban on the establishment and operation of needle exchange programs within UBA City by adding Chapter 24 to Title V and waive the second reading.
All right. Shannon, I have a quick question for you. Verbiage here references needle exchange programs. The program that began this conversation is not in fact a needle exchange program. Is that a, would that be a legal issue if we specifically ban needle exchange program versus stating syringe services program? Or are they interchangeable?
Let me check really quickly here. They should be interchangeable. This is the same ordinance that was passed by the county and syncs up with the county. But it does, it is focused on a needle exchange program by its terms.
So if we pass this ordinance as worded, would we still capture the syringe services program that's proposed for the county, for our area here? Or will we have to do something, or just change our verbiage to encapsulate that as well?
It would be a safer approach to change our verbiage to capture that as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments?
So Shannon, is the definition, is, if you look at CDPH's regulations, is the definition of a needle exchange program encompassing of syringe services?
You know, I just don't recall at this point. Let me look it up for you really quickly, and I can get back to you. If you'd like to go to the next moment, or item, I can come back in maybe five minutes with the item.
I think we might have further comment anyway, Shannon. So we'll just do what you got to do. We really appreciate that. And we'll see if there's any comment from the public. We have one from Karen Hess, I believe.
Yes, we do. All right. She's recommending the adoption with conditions. I understand why you want to adopt this ordinance after viewing the June 16, 2020 meeting. In the packet for your June 16 meeting, I could not find any analysis that supports an increase in hazardous medical waste for your consideration. If I were on the council, I would expect staff to do the research or report the facts as they know them. Then I heard more than one of you who did your own research that led you to your conclusion. This is what staff is for. From what I heard, it sounds like the new program is not a needle exchange but a needle giveaway. I read the state law. Did Dr. Lou or her designee approve this? You do know that state law was changed a few years ago, and these items can be obtained from a pharmacy without a prescription. So needle exchanges or giveaways are only needed for those who can, can afford to buy their drugs but choose not to budget for needles and syringes. I do not want to waste your time by repeating the comments made by the public at the June 16 meeting or present other facts, opinions at this time. Therefore, I ask the city council of UBA City to do the following. Approve the ordinance for one-year duration. Draft and approve a resolution declaring that the city of UBA City desires to, desires a workable plan to reduce IV drug use and its spread of communicable diseases. Desires CDPH and the local agency and its partners to develop and publish enforceable protocols to ensure that this is an exchange and not a giveaway, and give them a time limit to respond. Require approval of the program by local public health in accordance with the law. Schedule a review for 2021 and possible extension of the ordinance based on the evidence. I believe this is a compromise that would satisfy all parties involved and put the onus on the program to meet the needs of the community and develop a program that will be accepted.
Okay, thank you. Confirming no others?
Yes, that's confirmed.
Okay. Commentary, Vice Mayor? So you don't have anything yet in the interim? Well, we can't bring Grace back because she is still sequestered. Because she is still sequestered.
I will just take the opportunity to say that I am still in favor of the ban, however we end up having to word it. It's, I attended a good meeting over in Uba County involving several individuals, some of which were from Chico City Council, who are highly recommended that we don't proceed based on their experience in a similar program. A citizen came forth, a mother, and a local community, a gal who's very active in the community, identified some of the behaviors of the program ran up there. Also regarding needle exchange, not exchange, but syringe disposal services. Some of the commentary that I've heard and read, it would lead people to believe that this type of a program is necessary in order for people to receive services and properly dispose of syringes. That's, in my opinion, not true. People can offer services and do outreach to people who suffer from substance addiction without having to exchange or give them needles. I do believe it's probably a way to get some of the needles off the street, because they give them the Sharps containers, but there's way, other ways, I think, to do that without placing the the safety of our community and in particular our children at risk. Not to mention the fact that you might have a sterile needle, but what about that heroin you're injecting into your arm? I guarantee that's not sterile. So you're defeating your own purpose also. That's a little bit of my two cents on the issue.
Shannon, how are you progressing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I've taken a look at this. I don't see a definition of a needle exchange program in the Health and Safety Code Sections 12, 13, 49 at sequencha.
Okay.
That would be the sections that would regulate needle exchanges and clean needles and the process for doing that.
Okay.
I'm flipping through the last of it right now, but it appears to me that just using needle exchange program as it's currently in the ordinance and consistent with the county would apply to any needle exchange programs done under the Health and Safety Code Sections 12, 13, 49 at sequencha. So to the extent that this particular project, or project that may have been raised, falls within the ambit, then it would be subject to this particular restriction.
Okay, so we're good as we stand then, in your opinion, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
If they are proceeding under 12, 13, 49 at sequencha, this would cover them.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. So we're at a point now where, excuse me. Adopt the ordinance.
Through the mayor.
Sir.
I move that we adopt an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Uba City imposing a ban on the establishment and operation of needle exchange programs within Uba City by adding Chapter 24 to Title V and waive the second reading.
Second.
First and a second by, excuse me, Councilmember Cardoza to adopt the ordinance, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? None. Thank you very much.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear, I have not verified whether this, a particular program or community program would fall underneath 12, 13, 49. I'm just assuming that they are, I don't have that information.
Okay, would it be a problem, I mean, that is definitely our intent, is to prohibit these types of activities going on in our city. Is it a problem later to amend, or do we need to come back, or? If you do discuss?
We could come back with another ordinance if we needed to, and I suggest that if you were inclined to do so, you would sync up with the county as well and do it in conjunction with them.
Okay.
I will, I would like to note that attachment one to the staff report has the letter from CDPH, where it notes that this program is, has met the requirements of California Health and Safety Code Section 121349.
Okay, so we do fall under?
Yes, for authorization.
That's good news, thank you very much. All right, and?
Thank you, Diana.
Thank you. So Councilmember Espandola is back, now we're moving on to any future agenda items. And City Clerk will ask you, for the last time, any comments relating to future agenda items?
Nothing.
Very good. Seeing now, we'll move on to reports and communications, beginning with Councilmember Cardoza.
Okay, I'll start off with meetings. This meeting, I attended the Regional Housing Authority meeting, also attended our Sutter Community Affordable Housing. We have great news, Christian Court Phase Two in Live Oak is 99.9% finished. We're just waiting for PG&E to put a electrical box out front, and we can put, that is for low-income housing, affordable housing, excuse me, affordable housing. So we have the second phase, and they're getting ready to start their third phase. We're going and getting money, and we'll be starting the third phase here shortly. Court on that, on that committee I'm on, board that I'm on, the state's been pretty generous, and they are giving money throughout the community, Colusa, Sutter County, Live Oak, even Grass Valley. So there is affordable housing being built. The state and the feds are helping support us, and there is affordable housing coming in the future, and I hope we will have more here in Uba City. I attended the Uba Sutter Transit Authority meeting. I listened in on the Regional Waste Management meeting, and I attended the Planning Commission meeting for community and city events. I attended Terrell Locke's Farewell Retirement Party here at City Hall. Had a great turnout here for Terrell, and had an ice cream social, ice cream for everybody. I attended Sutter County Food Truck Event Number Two, Food Truck Friday. They had five vendors here on the backside of City Hall, in our parking lot, our shared parking lot, and they had a variety of food and drinks. Of course, I've attended the Farmer's Market on Saturdays at Town Center, and at our museum on Wednesdays. I got a couple of special thank yous, I want to thank Vice Mayor Mark Boober for cheering, leading the way for our Fourth of July fireworks. Thank you, great entertainment in the community, both sides of the river, had a great time. I'd also like to put a special thank out to our first responders, and especially our Uba City Fire Department, because on July 4th, they were very busy that night. Thank you, Chief, for you and your staff, also for keeping our community safe. I know you were bouncing from one location to another, but thank you for keeping us safe. And then on final comment, I said this before, but I'm gonna say it again. I said this a month ago, I'm only one vote, but I think the rest of the council will follow my lead. There's no way that I am going to defund our police department. I said this before, I'll say it again, I'll repeat myself. Our police department is one of the best police departments in the state and in the United States. I've worked alongside these gentlemen in the past, and I'd be more than happy to work with them right now. I'd rather live in a safe community than a disruptive community out of control. So it's just my closing comments. There's no way I'm defunding our department, and thank you, Chief Lannan, for you and your force, also to your staff, for keeping our city safe. So that's it for me, thank you.
You're here, thank you very much. Councilmember Espandola.
Thank you, I would like to begin by thanking Vice Mayor Boom Garden with the whole fireworks arrangement, part of your vision, and also working with, I believe, Brad Hudson in Marisville, and with the counties and some contributions in the community. Thank you for doing that. And the fireworks still tend to happen in our community, but we're doing our best. I just have a couple of other items that the C O from Sutter County, Steve Smith, mentioned, and it's all COVID-related. I'm genuinely concerned about the numbers and how these cases are increasing, and the spread of COVID is within our city and is within the community, so. And when I speak of the city, I'm talking about our city staff as well, so we are very concerned about the safety and the well-being of all community members. I do want to say that we had a meeting last week. Supervisor Floris and I have had multiple conversations, and he helped spearhead, along with Steve Smith, a meeting that he, we met with Supervisor Ziegemeier, Diana Langley, and Dr. Liu, and the Sutter County Health Department leadership, and the discussion of reaching out to our community of Spanish-speaking and other languages, but we were particularly talking about Latino outreach. And quickly from there, we held another online meeting with another team of committees, and Dr. Ravelis has been on this committee longer than I have, Mayor Ricky Semayo has been there, and Supervisor Floris and myself. I am in the side for the leadership on this, I'm the leadership side for Sutter County, and Dr. Ravelis is on the leadership side for Uba County. And we met with Dr. Liu and their leaders from SCORE, and their leader teams from YES, the two that they reported. We've had it in the last week, and I've had a week and a half, I thought that was Shannon talking to us, a week and a half. Someone's brushing their teeth back there, good, good help, thank you. We've had multiple meetings, and part of that is we developed a video in Spanish that has been released, we've done some radio ads. We attended San Isidore Church on Sunday, presented to both other mass services to over 100 individuals at each site. We gave out masks, hand sanitizers, information in Spanish. And then late this, right before coming to the meeting, I did an interview for UNIVIC on in Spanish, letting them know about the work that we're doing here in Uba City, and the big question was asked about, you know, being on the governor's list as a watch, on the watch list. So the information is out there. I think that if we are wanting our community to be involved in helping us, we need to give them the information, and doing that interview, I think, ran at 6:00 and probably 11:00 o'clock tonight. But we're gonna continue working, I have another meeting with the team tomorrow for additional plans, because part of the extended work is working with ag businesses, Sutter County Ag Commission, Farm Bureau, and other farm business owners, and extending into our outreach and education. And in addition to that is also educating our businesses how to support them in this ever-changing COVID-19, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I will keep mine pretty brief. Attended the Uba Sutter Transit Authority meeting, and then they're moving along through the COVID, adjusting their schedules and such, nothing major to report there at this time. The RWMA met as well. The main focus of that is what we've discussed briefly before, is what's the RWMA going to look like a year from now? Because with the new regulations and how everything's gotta be done, the next year is gonna be looking at how to restructure the RWMA and the authority that it will have. Thanks to the Vice Mayor, we had the Bokstert Master Plan for the Tax Sharing Agreement, and for the first time in probably a year, we actually had something positive, I felt, that came out of it. The city brought, went ahead and brought forward a proposal, because I'll just sum it up, in my opinion, we were getting nowhere. So we brought them some ideas, and we're gonna be meeting here in just another couple of weeks, and hopefully we can get that moving, because that'll be a key piece of the development for the South into town. And I think it's a good idea that was brought forth by our consultants, and thank the county for meeting with us, and Vice Mayor, thanks for being that squeaky wheel as well. You know, we gotta, we gotta meet, we gotta meet, we gotta meet, so we got there. Attended the Arts Council, filled in for our mayor, and thanks for letting me fill in. That was, that was fun, I will say kudos to the Arts Council. Out of all the organizations that been a part of, been affiliated with, really impressed how the small organization has figured out a way how to stand up completely virtual, and really impressed by that. And so, David, to you and the entire Arts Council, thank you. I enjoy attending those even as an alternate, and I guess, so thank you. Back to the Vice Mayor. My opinion, Fourth of July fireworks, the best ever. Of course, we only had two, but these were the best ever. Thank you to you and Brad for, you brought forth the vision a year ago and made it happen, and really, really enjoyed that, even in the COVID-19 environment. They were high enough that you could see them from just about anywhere, and we did 500, I vote for 700 next year. Just go ahead and get that FAA clearance, and we'll just go forward. Lastly, to all of our teams throughout the city, COVID-19's been a trying time. We realize that we're asking more and more every day to try to figure out how we're gonna meet the needs of our residents here in the city. And I just want to say thanks to our entire city team, because we're asking you guys to think out of the box and do a lot of things that you probably never thought of doing when you went to work for the city, however many years ago it was. To our E-team, I know Ben and Brad, you guys are here. We're always throwing you guys curveballs, like we did earlier tonight with, if you're gonna make me not eat inside, can we eat outside? We're just trying to figure things out. We want to give all of our businesses a fighting chance across the city, retail, restaurants, consulting, everything, we gotta have a fighting chance. And I know Brad, you're figuring out how to take care of all of our kids with camp and stuff. So to you guys, I appreciate it, again to all of our employees, and back to the two that kind of seem to be the action guys in the room, both of the chiefs. You guys are under a microscope, and you guys are kind of in the vice of things, so to speak, getting squeezed, and with resources, with pressures, I cannot say a thousand times enough how much I appreciate the men and women that work in your departments. You guys allow my family and I to go home and feel safe at night, and I just want to say thank you. So, Mr. Mayor?
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I do want to acknowledge the efforts of Councilwoman Espandola. You know, as the COVID infection rate continues to climb, it's clear that there are certain segments in our community that are more infected than others. The Latinos are certainly one of those, so anything that we can do, and you are doing it, to get the message out, I think, is very, very proactive and very needed at this point. There's also the segment of 20 to 40-year-olds that seems to be increasing, and so an overall change in the messaging, and I think, I can't remember who mentioned that, but, you know, changing, getting more messaging out, changing up the look of the message, the sound of the message, just to freshen it up a bit, and I understand maybe the mayor is even gonna be doing something, and I think there's some folks that want to put together a little community leader type of thing, you know, expressing some of the safety and social distancing things again. I'm an open message regarding COVID while I can. I don't usually try to talk a lot, but this is one I think I want to speak a little bit about, and that is, is that as we move into this next phase of business closure, a lot of comments, questions, concerns get forwarded to each one of us here on the council and to staff. I think it's important to note that, to the extent that we as a city, and I mean, council and staff, have the ability to affect or impact some of those decisions, we are heavily engaged with that. But as we saw last time, when it comes to things like alcohol beverage control, State Board of Cosmetology, calocea, unfortunately, those are tools, weapons, whatever, that others can use to enforce those things that they feel compelled to enforce. I think that we are at a point where if we start closing our businesses again, we are definitely in a position where we may lose more of them. So to the extent that we can think outside of the box and provide opportunities for our businesses to continue to exist, and one of those was one that we discussed tonight in regards to, you know, finding some way to keep our restaurants in business, I think that's helpful. Along those lines, when we start talking about, you know, and there are several folks in the community that are very passionate about sending us their concerns as it relates to defunding the police. Respect and understand that they're passionate about these, but many of the things that they're asking many of the things that they're asking us as a city to consider funding are not essential services of the city. And actually, we don't have the ability to really direct any of our city resources to those. Several of those are education, behavioral, mental, or public health issues, healthcare. Those are all separate functions or separate services that are not typical or traditional provision of a city. We have police, we have fire, we have roads, we have, help me. Oh, yes. Sewer and water. The city manager's glaring at me now, but, I mean, we have a lot of, a lot of things that go in, yep, a lot of things that we need to fund. So again, I understand the passion, but understand that some of the things that you're asking us to consider funding are not in a service that we provide. And certainly, again, I think it goes without saying, you know, public safety, police and fire, those aren't things that I intend to defund to the extent that the budget allows us to do so. I do want to acknowledge the fireworks. We were one of apparently only 14 communities in the state of California that was able to put on a legal fireworks show. We had plenty of illegal fireworks shows going on. And in my history here in the city, which encompasses over, well, now almost 40 years, that was the most incredible display of illegal fireworks I've ever seen. And I don't fault our police and fire departments for that. They were tasked with responding to the results of those illegal fireworks and the calls that came in that night. But it's clearly something that we hoped that we would lessen by a fireworks show. And we did not accomplish that this year, but I think there's other mitigating circumstances that interfered with that. So on the fireworks show, Brad Hudson, my fellow council member from the City of Marysville, he does a lot of work in making sure that that show goes on with the support of the, our Yuba City Council. Thank you all for continuing to support that. The Marysville City Council, Sutter County Board of Supervisors, the Yuba County Board of Supervisors, the Yuba Water Agency, Racology Yuba Sutter, Local 228 Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, all contributed. Also want to acknowledge 93Q Radio. They put the music on. Fish is, you know, a tremendous community supporter and his, his group of folks. And then Wide Awake Geek, I believe the gentleman's name is Chuck Ferguson. I'm apologizing if I'm getting that wrong, but they streamed, streamed the fireworks show, as did Ted Langdale. So for those that couldn't get out, there was an opportunity to see it. As far as a few last things here on the Master Tax Exchange Agreement, thank you, Councilman Shaw. I think we are plodding ahead here. And Ben and Diana, thank you for your efforts as well. I think we are getting much closer to the finish line, at least I certainly hope so. And to bring something back to the council for your consideration and approval, assuming that the county's going to do the same. And I would like to also finish up by reporting that Councilman Shaw and I have now begun the scheduling process for the Budget Ad Hoc Committee. We should begin that process in a couple of weeks. Again, with the, the end goal is bringing back some, some recommendations to the council, working in partnership with each one of our departments. So with that, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And a lot of thank yous going around the room. But I tell you, the Fourth of July fireworks, of course, is, was phenomenal. We had a good vantage point from Yuba City Fountain and it was a very enjoyable evening. And thank you for, for you and your spearheaded efforts, Vice Mayor, along with all the list of your entire village. They came together to make it happen and it was wonderful. And again, yeah, we had a few illegal fireworks in the air, but you know what? Bottom line is we did the best we can to try to curtail that, give people a reason not to do it. Some of them choose to do it anyway, but we still had a very good time. It was, it was pleasurable. Also for the Master Tax Exchange and the budget hearing I anticipated, thank you very much for the work you guys do and the background you have that you bring to the table on that. Looking forward to some good things coming out of that. And it's also encouraging to hear the progress that is being made regarding that. I did take some time off. I disappeared out of state for a while. It takes some, some time. And so during the, between now and our last meeting, we did set up a meeting. We're actually doing a lot of preparations. Of course, this is all above and beyond all things COVID. I mean, that's, that's just the saturating every minute of every day almost. But we have a plan with SECOG folks and some folks from Rails to Trails out of Washington DC for July 13th, building a pond, or actually it's in related to the $200,000 grant we received for feasibility study to develop and improve and fund our bike path from Sutter, hopefully all the way into Yuba City and beyond, using the Union Pacific Railroad property. So that's going to be quite exciting. I've been looking forward to this phone call for a while. And I think thank you to you and everybody. And it's working so hard to get us even to this point, particularly relating to getting the award, the $200,000 grant award. And it's wonderful. Did a great job on that. Continued work on SECOG regarding Funding Round Formula. Trying to decide where we get to a consensus when that vote comes up. I believe they've talked about that being in August or September. I attended a meeting at Bethel AME Church in Marysville. It was a very good meeting, very positive attitude, very open arms approach. Mayor Semayo was there, as was the sheriff and police chief from Marysville. Basically just having a conversation. They invited me kind of at the last minute about things related to George Floyd and all the protests and whatnot for the communities and how we can come together as a unit to basically have discussions on how we can improve. We, as a community, and the approach some people are taking, some approach some people are not taking. I got a text while I was sitting here from the, from the lady who was the organizer of that. So there's going to be continued conversations and I'll report back as well. And I just want to thank Dave for filling in for me while I was out of state at the Yuba Sutter Arts. I'm happy to know you concur that that's a great organization. They do a great job and they have been quite innovative as being virtual outreach to folks. So they are working very hard. Sometimes I don't understand how they can do so much, but they really do. They do quite a bit. And I'll close with just a thank you to staff. I mean, I could go down the whole list, but from you folks to Diana and all the way, everybody out there is working really hard. There's times of uncertainty and concern right now. We are doing the best we can with what we have to address it as efficiently as possible and responsibly as possible. Sometimes those decisions might not make a lot of sense, but that's why we have phones. And we'd be happy to talk to anybody if they have a question about what we're doing and why we're doing it. And like CIO Bindorf said, we learn every day and you adjust and retool and move on and try to improve. And that's the mentality and what we are working on doing. We will get through it. It's not going to be easy. What likely, reality is, we'll likely get worse before it gets better. But I would just call on everybody to understand that this is not a political thing. This is a biological thing. The viruses not care how you vote, but the virus does want to get inside you and do you harm. And so we need to respect each other, respect ourselves by taking proper precautions in the proper place. And I think the guidelines are very well-established. They've been communicated many times, but it doesn't hurt to continue to do so on our individual social media accounts or wherever, whatever platform is necessary. It's scary. I mean, we have people, people are literally in our community, our friends and neighbors are dying because of this. And we need to treat it like what it is and be responsible. So if we all do our part and move forward, we'll get through it. I think we're at the end of the meeting. It was a good meeting, I believe. And that being said, we will adjourn for the evening. Thank you very much. Unless you have, am I forgetting something?
Yes, you are.
I am forgetting something. I'm forgetting two of the most important things. We are, today we are closing in memory of two individuals whose lives were cut short. Both of them through motorcycle accidents. Tonight, we are going to go ahead, it is an honor, but it's also an unfortunate honor, to close in the memory of Mr. Logan Goulden, who was 23 years old, a resident of Marysville. He did tragically lose his life in a motorcycle accident. He'd leave him behind a father, his father Buddy, his mother Sherry, his sister Savannah. I know he had some connections to our community as well. And it's a very unfortunate situation for his passing at a young age of 23. Also going to close in memory of Mr. Michael Sanchez, who was 44 years old, employed as a Gold Sox photographer. He was the son of Paula and Mike Senior Sanchez, who also tragically lost his life in a motorcycle accident. He was a victim of a hit and run over in Yuba County. He is survived by his daughter Avon, his sister Jennifer Sanchez Crawford, who is the wife of our firefighter Drew Crawford and Anita Sanchez, his stepmother Patricia and his stepsister Lisa and his stepbrother Mark. Very sad and unfortunate times for those individuals and their families. And we humbly and respectfully close our meeting tonight in both of their memories and honor. Thank you.